Okay, welcome everyone. It's five o'clock. I'm gonna call the education operations meeting to order. Jim is with us by phone, so I'll chair the meeting tonight. First agenda item is to approve the minutes. I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of October 23rd, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next we'll move on to public and student comment. Okay, we do have three speakers tonight. I'll ask that when your name is called, please come to the front table here. The microphone is on. State your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak, and you'll see that timer counting down on the screen there. Up first is Michael Hughes. I got it.
And I'm Amanda Mullen, we're here together.
Okay.
So, thank you. My name is Michael Hughes. I reside at 5815 Old Coach Road.
And my name is Amanda Mullen. I am at 4115 Briarwood Avenue.
And we are here, we are members of the Governance Board of Red Granite Charter School, and we want to explain a little bit more about who we are, what we're about, what we hope that we can accomplish together. I don't think we're totally strangers to the school board. I know that we are part of the agenda tonight. But I think it's important for us to highlight a few of our success stories, at least as of this point. We've recently been awarded a five-year federal grant for our school worth nearly $2 million, and that grant is contingent on our relationship with the authorizer, which is of course the Wausau School District. We have our school, as well as the school district, signed a charter school contract as of June 13th of 2023. And as part of that contract, it was understood that we would be incorporating into Hewitt, Texas Elementary School. Not as an all-or-nothing approach, but as sort of a careful, calculated phase-in that would start next fall with us utilizing two of the rooms within that building. We would be, of course, expanding from those two rooms in subsequent years as a phased approach. And this approach is, it comports even with the terms of the contract, which list the current Hewitt, Texas Elementary School as our residence for notices pursuant to the relationship we have with the Wausau School District. And I guess our ultimate concern right now is to just ensure that our school can remain viable as it has conceptually throughout our negotiations and our interaction with the Wausau School District. Obviously, as a new school, we need to be viable. That's our primary concern. And we would like to note that the current Hewitt, Texas school building, it's a perfect location for this charter school. It's in a remote area. It's wooded. It has a beautiful pond. It is the idyllic environment for a Waldorf-inspired charter school. And I think that was probably recognized when the two organizations converged and identified that location. And we're at the point now where we are going to start accepting students, and we are going to begin teaching them in the fall of 2024. And our Governance Board is in the process of initiating a pretty aggressive marketing campaign to get as many students enrolled as possible. What we're looking to do is utilize direct mailing, print media, radio ads, town hall meetings, social media. We want to throw everything into the advertising that we can to make sure that we get off on the right foot. And ultimately, what we want to do is ensure that the previous decisions that have been made regarding the viability, the location, the purpose of our school do remain viable. Because as we advertise this school and get it off the ground, of course, we need to ensure that we have a place to go and that our concept of what this school will look like matches what the Wausau School District envisions it will be. So, before we can get too far into this aggressive marketing campaign, we need to make sure that the current approach that we have utilized, the one that the parties have negotiated for, will remain. And that's what we're here for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, Amanda, you signed up as well. Did you have anything else you wanted to add? Because you have three minutes if you'd like it.
Michael covered it all.
Okay, good. Just wanted to offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dana, is it Moore?
Hello. I'm Dana Moore, 3415 Wildwood Lane, Wausau, Wisconsin, 54401. I'm a parent at Wausau Area Montessori Charter School. Students in the lobby, you'll see. And I'm a member of the Governance Council at this school as well. I've been in front of the board before, so hi again. But last time with a group of parents to kind of explain more about what our school is, what makes it unique, what an asset to the community it is, and the challenges that we've had for almost 20 years trying to operate in a hallway of another school. So we're not going to reiterate all of those points tonight because I think all of you really understand those challenges. Because you also voted earlier this summer to move us into Lincoln Elementary. So, that was kind of part of the restructuring of the district. Prior to that, the community voted in a referendum to allocate funds for Montessori to have adequate space. I think my biggest concerns tonight are with kind of a lack of communication and conversation with our school as big decisions are being made and have been made in the past couple of weeks. And it seems like big decisions are being made tonight. So, our Governance Council hasn't even met since you guys met last to talk about what the restructuring kind of means for our school. Or had a chance to kind of talk with head of school, admin, all of those kind of things. We meet tomorrow night. So, I guess some of this is an open invitation to work with us because our challenges really remain the same. We do not have adequate space for our students. We kind of run out of space next year. And that's not really fair to the students and staff next year, but we thought we could kind of make it work for a year, knowing that we would move in fall 2025. Knowing that that might not be the case is kind of stressful, kind of frustrating. Hoping we can just have a better dialogue together. And trying to have more answers to the unknowns. We're trying to operate a K-8 school in the district. I think we still really are an asset to the district. And we just don't want to be last priority, is kind of what we're trying to get at. So, we can't really wait any longer. There's, on one hand, I'm asking you to slow down a little bit, the conversation tonight, and on the other hand, I'm saying we need to move swiftly. So, I understand that can kind of be intention. And maybe a mixed message, but really what I'm trying to express is that the difficulties our school faces, we need more collaboration, we need more partnership and more conversation when you're looking at the big picture of the district, and to include us and prioritize us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us then to our 4K program agreement. Kara Rakowski is here. She's the 4K Principal and Early Childhood Coordinator. And Julie Shell, Director of Elementary Education, will review the program agreement for the 24-25 school year.
Good evening.
It's on, yep.
We're here tonight to present the 4K program agreement, which is issued annually to our 4K community partner collaborative sites. The Wausau School District 4K program has entered into program agreements with community partners since 2002. These community partnerships currently allow 112 children to attend 4K programming within one of our four community locations. Children enrolled in these locations receive 4K instruction onsite with wraparound childcare available outside of the 4K day. This collaboration provides an extended day option through both before and after-school programming and 4K services being offered in licensed childcare facilities. The 4K agreement being presented tonight remains consistent in wording with last year's agreement and has minimal adjustment to some words to shift from an RTI lens to an Equitable Multi-Level System of Support, or EMLSS lens. We intend to issue partner agreements with our current 4K partners, which we have had agreements with for the past five years. This includes Wausau Childcare, Mountain View Montessori, Woodson YMCA, and Newman Catholic St. Michael.
Any questions from board members? I always ask each year if there are any changes from last year, but you took away my ability to ask that question now. So, you covered already. Okay, then I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the 4K agreements as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that will then bring us to our next steps planning presentation. And I'll turn that over to Dr. Hiltz.
Evening, everybody. So, as we know, there were some important decisions made at the last meeting. So, in order to enact what the board is seeking, we're looking for some direction. I think the best way to do this is to approach it one topic at a time. So, we'll ask the questions, get your feedback, and hopefully we can get some things rolling. So, on the agenda, it's a short agenda. Just a little revisit of the demographics, which are so central to this whole concept. A few elementary topics, a few secondaries. And then, this was kind of in the timeline anyway. We'll be asking the board just, one, for awareness and two, for permission, to start developing an RFP for a busing contract. So, we'll talk about that later, too. So, next slide, Cassie. So, this just wanted to show that Marathon County's population is growing, but you'll see from the numbers, they're growing just about 3%. Rest of the state is about 3.5%, while the rest of the US grew at a rate of about 7.5%. So, Wisconsin's a slow-growing state. That's one piece to know. And then the second slide just speaks a little bit to age demographic. You'll see that top bullet, and this is what we've been talking about for quite a while. We're going to have fewer students. And that, so since 2010 to 2022, the 0-4-year-olds decrease as a percentage of our population from 6.5 to 5.5. That's roughly 500 fewer students in the county, or children, in that age bracket, while those 65 and older have increased significantly from 14 to 19. So, that's just some information that leads then into the next point, which is the, there is a, there's interest in an elementary consolidation study, is my understanding. And so, we wanted to get some direction from the board on how you'd like to proceed. There was talk about a consultant. We did a little preliminary research, talked to a couple of consultants. One thing the board will want to know is there's a variety of people who do this work. There's demographers, there's urban planners, there's even architectural firms that do some of this for different districts. So, we have a list of just five right now, I think, that are currently acting with some other districts of similar size or larger. So, what I'm wondering is, what process would the board like to use? And you see a timeline based on some conversations I've had. The timeline is obviously heavily dependent on what type of work you want this group to do. If you want a recommendation, the different consultants offer very different services. I might recommend that we, I could get some references from other districts. I could reach out to those firms. We could invite them for, we could do a paper review, do some interviews, see what product best matches our needs, get some bid estimates, and then make a decision. And that decision could be made by the board, or it could be made by administration. So, let me pause there and see if people have questions or suggestions.
Suggestions or questions from the board?
I guess I'm going to go back to what we talked about a few weeks ago. Elementary consolidation, as I understand it, that is not the goal, okay? The goal was better use or more efficient use of resources, better experience for kids and staff in elementary schools. This is one possible solution to that goal, if we agree on the goal. And I don't even know, the ones that I had thrown out two weeks ago were purely for example purposes. So, I think until the board sets a strategic objective and/or goal relative to elementary, I can't answer the question about do we need a consultant or not because I don't know what we're trying to solve for. And I don't want to go down the exact same path that we just went down with the secondary schools. And that is what, to me, that's step one right here.
What? Any other board members? Questions, thoughts?
Well, I was kind of wondering about what the consultant would do. I mean, because the other, right, the other slides and talking about our two charter schools have created a little bit of confusion here in the last week about, like, are we changing, changing what was approved like a month ago, right? That Lincoln would merge into Jones and Hewitt can stay. I had suggested Hewitt could stay where it is while Red Granite started out there. But if Lincoln is going to go into Jones, then, you know, we have to have a conversation about how to, how much space do we need at Jones? And, but Pat, is that, you know, am I getting ahead too?
Well, I think, I mean, the plan, the elementary consolidation plan that was previously approved included fifth graders moving out of the schools.
Right.
So, that plan is off. Plan is canceled. So, we're back at the start for...
So, what was approved a month ago, you're saying isn't, was canceled besides the secondary mergers? And we're looking at everything fresh?
Well, I don't, I don't know how, you know, maybe it's just semantics, but I don't know how else to describe it. If the plan that was previously approved had fifth graders moving out, and that's no longer happening, then yes. I think we have to describe it as we're starting fresh when it comes to elementary schools. I think, I don't think our goals changed from what they were when we started this process even back before the elementary subcommittee met, which was, how do we, how do we both improve services to our students and improve working conditions for our staff while at the same time becoming more efficient? And sometimes when we talk about the money, it seems like we're kind of doing something to something that's bad, and it's just to save money, and they don't see the part where we're talking, but actually, there's some ways to actually improve education. And some parts of the plan are only for financial reasons. Some parts of the plan are only for educational reasons. But I think that broad goal is still the same. And I think if we're, if we're going to take a look at, you know, starting from scratch basically with the elementary schools, I think having, having somebody else come in and take a look at it and give us a recommendation would be useful. I don't disagree with Pat that we need to give them some sort of direction, but they, they might come in and recommend no consolidation, or they might recommend consolidation, or they might recommend boundary changes, or they might, I mean, I don't, it's hard to say whether I'd agree with it until we hear what it is.
Right. And if I, maybe just back up a second. So, if you think about elementary's, elementary schools within the Wausau School District from a strategic view, the goal was to provide better services, provide better education for the students, as well as a more consistent, better, if you will, environment for the staff. So, where I would start in my day job is what are the requirements of a school that answers those questions?
But it's not, but I think it's important that we don't leave out the third prong of that, which was also become more efficient with our resources.
Absolutely.
Oh, because you just didn't say that one. So, I'm like, if we only had the better, that's going to be a much different recommendation than if we also consider being efficient.
Understood. So, if those are the three goals, then we define, somebody defines, what are the requirements that we have behind each of those? What does that ideal school look like? And as I mentioned a few weeks ago, from an efficiency standpoint, do we want our cost per student to go down by 10%? Do we want to have a certain number of ratio of paraprofessionals per student? Do we want to have class sizes no larger than X? And I know we have policies on that now, but do those requirements change? We have to define those. And then if you bring a consultant in and you say, okay, here's our requirements, this is what we're trying to get to, what can we do based on all of this information in totality? What can you recommend to us some options for achieving these goals? But until we have those goals, again, we're going to have solutions looking for problems. If we can define what it is we're trying to do, then you can bring in professionals to help us get there.
The concern I would have, I don't disagree with the concern I would have with it if we get too locked in, is what John has mentioned before, is that we're not starting from scratch with a, with no buildings and just able to build it however we want. So, you may have goals, but there may be different things achieved by different moves. Maybe these two schools combined together hits three goals. That's amazing. Maybe this one, you can't, there's just no fiscal way to reach that goal of paraprofessionals per student or whatever it is.
And that's absolutely a possibility, yes.
So, you gotta have some, you gotta have some flexibility to say, like, that isn't really, that isn't realistic.
That is absolutely understood and should be a component of any kind of strategic project. There's going to be decision points along the road. But the key to those decision points is to have discussion, to have artifacts, and to have documentation that support and justify what those decision points are and can explain to the community why we're going a certain way. And at some point, we may have to invite feedback from the community to help with those decisions.
Do you envision a consultant to help us fine-tune those goals? Or we create those goals first and then just give them to the consultant?
I think if we provide, typically what we would do is we would provide a framework, right? Saying, here's a high-level framework. We're not going to get down to the net's wing. But here's a framework. This is what we're generally trying to accomplish. And those goals from, again, experts come in and they say, okay, hey, you know what? We think you're on track here. That's great. We think you could get some more traction here. This one may not be attainable, but we're going to put it on there. And then they, you know, come to us for prioritization and decisions as the process moves along. And we act as a steering committee, decision maker, rather than, you know, trying to pinpoint, okay, we're going to consolidate schools and hope that we end up with, you know, something better than we have today. Let's define what better is, then march towards that step by step. And I don't know what the timeline is. So, to me, the timeline, having a timeline on here is completely irrelevant right now because could it take six months? Could it take six years? I have no idea until you start to get the requirements and you get input from, if we're going to use a consultant, then the timeline flows from there. Because if you put a timeline out there now, you can have it done fast, you can have it done well, or you can have it done cheap. Pick any two. But you're not going to get all three.
Well, and the timeline also is really dependent on what the final decision is as well.
Absolutely.
Changing boundaries could be made with a board decision. Adding on to buildings requires referendum planning and referendum passing, and so, yeah. It's just...
And if we have to go to a referendum, if they would say we're going to do X, Y, and Z, and we have to add on here, or you need an operational referendum to fund paraprofessionals or, you know, more teachers for lower class sizes, whatever it is, we package all that together, you have a communication plan around that, and you put it to the people and say, here's what we're proposing we do, here's what it costs, and here's what you're going to get out of it.
I have a concern of falling into paralysis by analysis. I hope that's not what we end up doing here because the problem that we face is quite simple. We are stretched thin. We have 13 elementary facilities that we are constantly having to heat and cool and maintain and fix roofs and molded landscaping and snow removal and all those things that go along with maintaining 13 facilities with fewer staff and all the, you know, fewer students and all the... The problem is quite simple, and solutions should be quite simple. You have a certain set of money from the taxpayers and the state to spend on your buildings and grounds and students and staff. And what Karen mentioned with Elm Brook, you look at their facility footprint, they're same-size district as us. They're spending fewer dollars on buildings and grounds and more on students and staff, at least at their elementary footprint, right? So, I mean, that's, that's what we are trying to get to, is to a position to where we have more of our resources and fewer buildings, and fewer buildings that we have to consistently go to the, I shouldn't say consistently, but, you know, every 10, 20, or 30 years, go to the community to fix something or, you know, do referendums. So, the goal would be to get to a point where we can not ask for referendum dollars ad nauseam, or smaller referendums that are easier to, you know, accept or vote for.
So, that's an approach. If that is the goal that the board wants to march towards, then pick some schools, figure out where the kids are going to go and close them. That addresses exactly what you're talking about in a very speedy timeframe.
And do we need a consultant to tell us that?
I don't know. If that, if that's the only goal, then this discussion is moot, and we should just be talking about brick and mortar and where you're going to put the kids. But if you really want to start getting towards what does that ideal culture look like or what that ideal school looks like, both from a student, parent, staff perspective, I think you need, it needs more thought. But I, that's just my opinion. Others may differ, and you may want to do, you know, something really quick with, with brick and mortar, get out of that business, decrease square footage, and you can accomplish that. That's fine. But then just understand you may not get what you want at the end in terms of trying to improve that overall experience. You get more kids in a building, but is it going to be a better experience? I don't know because I, we don't have that defined for what that means.
Well, we've defined some of that throughout this process. And we've talked about how a more model-sized school, how we're easy, how it's easier for us to staff specialists at that school full-time. It's easier to provide gifted services at a model-sized school than it is at three small schools. It's easier to have, for us to staff, you know, social services, counseling-type of staff at a model-sized school versus traveling between three schools because the kids don't have their breakdowns when the expert happens to be there. We've talked about having, you know, so we've talked about having, you know, encore there. We've talked about, you know, the benefits of having encore rooms where they can do more than if they're, you know, traveling. So, we've, we've talked about those benefits that can be obtained with consolidation of elementary schools. If we get to more of a, even just, if we could even get our schools to an average-sized school, which we have one or two of those out of 13. So, I don't, I don't think those things conflict. I don't think, I don't think the fiscal and the education benefits conflict. I think, I think in this sense, a lot of them go together.
So, do we have those documented anywhere? Because those are requirements, exactly what you're talking about. If somebody came in today and said, hey, what are your requirements for this model elementary school? We would say, we've talked about this, 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 and this. Where's an artifact that we can produce to say, here's what we're trying to accomplish? That's the first step.
It might be helpful, I think, to hear from administration. And I know we did talk about this along the way. But one of the things I think I'm hearing you say about this is sort of the title is elementary consolidation, which makes it look like that's the goal. And really, that isn't the goal. The goal is, like has now since been discussed, consistent class sizes, better, you know, staffing, better, you know, supports for our students, better ratios, all of those things. And so, I think maybe if we could hear from you and the administration team to say, these are kinds of the things that would be ideal and would make for a better experience for our students and staff at the elementary level, rather than it being titled consolidation, although we know, like Lance just said, those model-sized schools do typically meet those goals, then, then we kind of are working towards, and I think that's how you also draw the community into the conversation to help them understand if a decision does get made by a consultant to say the way to reach these goals will require any kind of consolidation, well, then at least the community can appreciate this is why and this is how, you know, we're achieving these goals that hopefully we're all on board on, because, on board with because it's what's best for students and staff and ultimately the community. So, that might be more helpful to just kind of outline some of those things from you. And then as the board, we can talk about whether, okay, those are the ones we're most critical, that we really, you know, want to support and, and talk about. The timeline thing, I think there is some part of it that to me is a little bit concerning because I, I am concerned about Montessori and Red Granite and where that all stands right now for them. And, and so, I do think we need to have those conversations.
It sounds like it's almost, almost a suggestion of having a board workshop that does a lot of what was done in the elementary subcommittee that met over the summer. So...
Well, because the parameters have changed.
Well, but I, I mean...
I always say K through 5.
Well, but I, I mean, I mean, and people are asking questions about the things like consistent class sizes and traveling staff and those types of goals that were discussed in the elementary subcommittee meeting. So it sounds like it would be useful to have a board workshop where it's discussed, because not all board members could attend and plus it happened at the same time as the secondary. So I didn't, I went to the elementary ones, I didn't go to the secondary ones.
Isn't there, isn't there documentation from those, those sessions that people could bring forward? One document, here's what those committees over all that time period decided the model school looks like? And it should also include demographics, to John's point. It should include operating expense, it should include staffing demographics, all of that stuff. I mean, if, if someone came to us and said, go, go close your, your least efficient school, we can't answer that.
Well, I can, I can answer the question of, of a document that says, here's what your exact model school looks like. That was never created. And the reason it wasn't created is for the same, same thing that John has brought up before, is that, um, we don't have the luxury of starting from scratch and creating eight model-sized schools. Because our schools are big and small and old and new and spaced, some of them are close together and some of them are far apart. And so I know that that committee looked at it from within the realm of what our actual schools are. And one of the big pushes from that committee was the request that we combine or move full schools. That was one of the big things that came out of that committee, um, was to avoid boundary changes and instead try to move full, full schools together. And so that drove a lot of discussion. If we're starting from scratch, maybe that's, maybe that's no longer one of the driving factors anymore. Um, because if you're talking about an actual full reconstruction of the whole district and many model-sized schools, then, I mean, then you're talking major boundary changes and a huge referendum. And that, that committee thought that major boundary changes combined with a huge referendum would fail, and so that didn't go very far.
Which if we, that fails, we're back to square one in what we're trying to accomplish here and utilizing resources. Um, I would imagine that if we engage a consultant about model schools, I would probably point to Elm Brook and other similar schools, uh, that have consolidated their elementary footprint to have schools of four to five hundred or six hundred students, somewhere in that range, so that they can have three, four sections of a grade and really keep class sizes the way that they want them and, and manage fluctuations and keep their, uh, staff and specialists and fewer buildings. I mean, that's, consultant's going to tell us what we likely already know. My own hometown is doing this right now. I just went back home to Michigan for Thanksgiving and they're combining three elementaries into one larger elementary, um, facility right across the, from our, from the old, from the high school and middle school, so, um, because they understand bringing those resources together. So I, I mean, I think if we engage a consultant, I would imagine most consultants would tell us, you need to get to this sort of footprint. You need six to eight elementary schools to achieve, you know, what you're doing. And then from there, which ones are they and what would need to be added on to, right? And I, I don't see any way through this that's not ending in some sort of referendum to add on to some schools and consolidate the ones that are identified, you know, that need to be consolidated.
Any other thoughts from board members or direction for administration? Because obviously we want to set up a meeting at some point here in the future where we put this back on the agenda and.
You said you had a short list of five already that you have looked into, and they come from all different, you know, architects to, so can you, where did you get the, the short list of five, I guess is maybe?
Current consultants that are working with other districts who are doing some restructuring. So Kenosha, Green Bay, Cassie did most of the research, um.
Did you talk with Oshkosh at all? Okay.
But I certainly can reach out to Oshkosh. They've been doing similar work. Yeah, Cassie did a little outreach. We got some feedback, but Oshkosh would be another good one. Um, so the, that's, that's basically where we got our, our starting list. But we didn't know, again, if that was the direction, so we didn't, if, if that is a direction, we can certainly cast a broader net. To, to an earlier point, first of all, thank you for all the discussion. This is helpful. Um, we, as, as Lance said, in the elementary subcommittee, there was a lot of work, talk around the goals and what we were trying to achieve. Um, I don't know if it was quantified, um, like you had indicated, Pat, you know, like, um, um, staffing demographics or financial or student demographics. It was really kind of describing more of a qualitative model where you've got, you know, at least, you know, at least four teachers in a PLC, right? You've got at least one, um, uh, interventionist per school, right? It was those kinds of descriptions. Um, because again, like Lance said, we can't necessarily create the ideal, but we could certainly convert some of that into some of these measures if that would be helpful. Um, as I said, we've, we've got that, we just, uh, we may have it in a different form. But I'm not sure where that takes us. Um, I guess, like you say, it gives us some measures, but I, I'm, I'm hearing, you know, there's, we're trying to describe our, our ultimate goals so we could start there. Um, I could cast a broader net, do some more outreach for, uh, for consultants if the board, that would be two steps that I could take if the board would be interested. If I'm going in the right direction.
And I think it would be also useful to talk to those districts to see, did those consultants come in after the board said, here's our, here's our main six objectives? Or did the consultants take a look at the district and say, you know, and work with the board to come up with, like, like a first kind of meeting where you kind of come up with your objectives first, then the consultants go back and do more work to come up with a recommendation? Or was it, you know, like, how did that work? I, I don't know that there's a right answer to that. I'm just curious what the process would, would be like.
There's not a right answer, but there's definitely a more cost-effective answer. Because a consultant will gladly come in with a completely clean sheet of paper and help you decide everything, and it'll cost more than if you have six objectives and say, okay, how are we going to meet these? They'll be happy to, to meet either of those requirements.
And I, I think the broad objectives, we know, it's, it's, it's when you start getting down to the details, when you, you know, like, when you say a model-sized school, well, we can, we can come up with what our perfect-sized school is, but that is, just isn't reality. We're not going to be able to make all of them that exact size.
And, and I, I don't disagree with that, but until you define what our ideal-sized school is, how do you even know if you're close? I mean, just going at this, well, I won't say that term. You have to know if you're eighty percent of the way there, are you ninety percent of the way there? You know, to John's point, you know, analysis paralysis, sometimes if you can get eighty percent of your goal, that's going to be really, really good. Other times, it may be, you know, easy to be, to get a hundred percent. But if you're only fifty percent of the way there, then you have to start asking questions like, well, is this really worth the disruption that it's going to cost? Or is this worth the expense that we're going to have to incur to make this happen? But you have to have something objective to measure against in terms of what you're trying to do.
Did the administration, did, Dr. Hills, did you guys just kind of go through with your team and come up with the original, you know, suggestions for elementary moves, the whole school moves? Or did, did you have a consultant of any sort help?
Committee? Because I was on that committee.
Right, over the summer?
Yeah.
So it was more your suggestions out of the committee to help drive that?
Yes and no. Um, yes, it was suggestions out of the committee, but also what you'll find when you start talking about consolidating schools, some of the same schools always come up on the list. In fact, one of the questions from one of the parents in one of the first meetings was, why is Grant always getting picked on? And the, the answer was, um, it's not an intent to pick on Grant, it's just that there's an, there's another school that's real close, that's newer and doesn't need as many millions of dollars. And same kind of thing with Lincoln, like, why is Lincoln on that list? Well, because Jones is pretty new and it's, it's right next to it.
Right.
Um, and so one of the things we talked about in the first meeting is, everything is ready to go, you, and you can decide whatever you want. But you, once you get into it, you're going to find that you kind of start getting pigeonholed in. Are you going to close South Mountain? It's the newest school we have. Statine? Like, no. So those two are off. You know? Um, and, and then you got, well, you got Grant and Jefferson are right next to each other. Well, Grant's the one that's way older, doesn't have air, needs more upkeep, okay. So you know what I mean? So even though we started with, you can kind of do what you want, after studying the buildings, you start getting narrowed down. There's some that aren't quite as easy as that, but you, you get narrowed down where it's just not realistic. Like you're, you know, you're just.
I, I understand that, Lance. You're, you're answering the question, like, because my ultimate question is, do we need to have a consultant to tell us the exact same thing we already know? So what are we going to use a consultant for? What are they going to help us, help define and then market or, you know, package the right way to, to help with communicating with the, with the public? Is, is that the goal that we're, you know, to have the consultant to help us with that final piece? Because I agree, looking at the buildings, and that's why I'm saying, you know, if Lincoln's going into Jones and Grant's going over Thomas Jefferson, some of them seem real easy. There's just a couple that are a little squishy still for different reasons.
Well, one of the things I think that someone outside, whether it be a city planner or otherwise, can bring in is they're going to look much better than our board or our administrative team can look at, city growth, traffic patterns, and just like realistic other pieces and county data and like that, that is maybe a more broad view. And it also brings in maybe, like, it takes out all bias that I think is probably really important for our community at this point, to feel like the board isn't driving this, the administration isn't driving this, they haven't decided it's that school that's going to close and not this one. I mean, so there's something to be, I, I, I'm not a big fan of paying an outside person to have to do that, but there is something to be said for bringing in an outside person who can be neutral and just look at things without emotion and look at every detail, not just maybe what the board might look for or what an educator might look at, but, you know, kind of a, a thirty-thousand-foot view and then narrow in and say, and, and that's, you know, kind of what they do for other districts. So that's, I think, one benefit that, you know, an outsider brings, and that's what you pay for.
I can agree with that.
If the board wants to consider boundary changes, then I think everything you just said times ten is true. Because I don't think anybody on here has been through boundary changes except for Pat and I. It's really, really hard, really, really emotional. So if that's something that's going to be considered, um, then definitely a, a consultant to, to review it and give opinions would be helpful.
Okay, well then, I guess, you know, add, maybe add that to the list. Because the consultant's going to look at it as all options are on the table at the beginning until we would give direction.
Right, because like in the elementary committee, when one of the big requests was move whole schools, then we kind of, we just went away from the move boundaries. You know, I mean, you are moving a boundary in the sense that, you know, two schools are combined together, but I, you know, I mean, we didn't start just redrawing the lines because we went away from that very early. But if that's going to be on the table, then, um, I think a consultant could help with that, looking at the population and the growth and where we expect it to go.
In your experience with consolidation or, or not even, when trying to write a footprint, I won't even say that, you know, um, my experience is obviously much more limited, but it doesn't seem it's ever without boundary changes in the experience that I've seen. Um, do you see otherwise? Is that a typical plan to say, nope, we're going to move entire schools inside of another in order to avoid boundary changes and, you know, diminish some of the emotions? And then that, because that means definitely referendum money needed in order to expand our schools, because we don't have the capability of, uh, but for maybe one.
So I, fortunately, I haven't had to close a lot of schools. Um, and, but I've known, you know, a number of examples where it's, it's certainly happened. And, and yes, typically, I think without exception, it's involved boundary changes. Um, that was one nice feature about merging whole schools, right, is it eliminated one semi-contemptious issue, you know, and, and brought some more unity to the, to the process. But, um, so I would say that, that boundary changes would almost be required, you know, if we're going to change that footprint.
I think something that was talked about at the last meeting too, Karen brought it up, is when we move forward with this, we should be doing it with excellence, making sure we're doing it the right way for the entire community. And I think to do that, um, definitely getting feedback from other districts like Kenosha or Oshkosh, if we can get feedback from them, how did they move forward in this process? How did they engage with the consultants? Um, and what did that process look like for them? And I think that will give us maybe some better tools and ideas as we move forward with this and our district.
Any other thoughts, board members? If not, we'll move on to the next, still on this agenda item, but the next topic.
If you don't mind, I just want to kind of clarify. What I, what I'm hearing from the first one is, let, let me reach out to some districts and check on their process, right? What came first, chicken or egg? Um, reach out to, uh, did I, did I? Did I, um, kind of take our original goals from the last subcommittee, um, re, repackage those, if you will, kind of quantify those? Did I hear that correctly, right? Elementary subcommittee goals? Um, did you want me to reach out to any other consultants? Um, I guess I've only spoken to two, um, and they, again, they come from a, from a very different background. Um, may I also start with the districts and see what their experience was? I've not spoken to them yet. Okay, all right, I'll do that. Thank you. Okay, um, so then that leads directly into, into this. So, yeah, we've got two charter schools seeking homes. Um, and, and I, I, I'll apologize for the direct language, but I just want to be really clear. We, we were planning on moving these schools in these, into these other schools in the fall of twenty-five. Um, does the board still want me to make that happen? Um, I, I would have to, and, and I, I know this is an emotional topic, I'll just speak plainly, we'd have to close Lincoln, uh, in time to do the remodeling to get Montessori in. The only way I, I believe we could do that would be to split the students and staff from Lincoln into Grant and into Lincoln. I believe we have capacity. We did back in, say again?
Into Jones and then into Grant?
Yes, Jones and Grant. Did I say it wrong? Thank you. So we could accomplish that. Um, Red Granite, um, again, we're, we're moving them into Hewitt, Texas in, in two classrooms next year. There might be some more options there. Um, but is, I guess, looking for some direction on these two situations.
I think we should, um, I, I think we should hear from the Montessori council and head of school and get their opinion on, you know, do they, do they want to wait to see what, if anything, happens with the elementary schools? Or would they rather go back to the original referendum plan of adding on to Horace Mann and giving them their space there and let them weigh in on that decision? Because we can't really give them an answer right now. I mean, maybe we'll consolidate elementary schools and, and things will be back on that same track in two years or maybe ten years from now, there'll be no change. And I, and I don't know how we tell them which way it's going to go with any confidence when we're at this stage of the process. And so I, I, I think I would, I would want to know what, is it, is getting into an elementary building important enough that, that they would prefer just to wait in their current space? Or, or would they rather not wait around for five years and then think, well, gosh, we could have had our, our space at, at Horace Mann by now? That, that's my opinion on it. I don't know what other board members think. Uh, because the idea of cutting, the idea of splitting Lincoln right now into two, sending some to Grant or to, uh, Jones and some to Grant, and then also still talking about other consolidation and other boundary movie, moves coming soon? I mean, that, that to me isn't something I don't.
I'd want to make one move. I want the Lincoln students to be able to make one move instead of.
Right.
Potentially multiple moves over. potentially multiple moves over a couple of years or something till everything got straightened out.
And with Hewitt, Texas, and not knowing the broader plan yet, as as we just discussed, I would have an issue with closing in quotes, Hewitt, Texas to the current student population and sending them somewhere else and then keeping it open for the charter school by itself. We would not experience any of the efficiencies that you guys are going for, because if we're keeping the school open, we have to consider the current student population there. I I think that's disingenuous to say, we're gonna close this, but we're only closing it for the traditional educational setting. We're still gonna keep it open for this one and pay the same operating expense.
And have two classrooms full.
Right.
Right.
So I I don't think you can go forward with either of these right now, and I do agree with what you said, Lance. Get get uh, Montessori's input on what they prefer, um, or what they would see as a path to success, whatever that may be. Um, and we heard tonight from, you know, from Red Granite, and obviously, we're going to take their wishes and requests into consideration too. But can, i- is there room at at Hewitt right now for the two classrooms?
Yes.
Okay, so they, you guys can start out there and there's no there's no issue. But it's it's going forward that we have to think about it.
Yeah, I would say if they can, if there's room out there for the two classrooms for them to get started, then that would seem to make the most sense while we continue to work through whatever it is, the plan, that will hopefully come forward in all of this.
The problem from Red Granite's standpoint, obviously, is their current goal is to add a class, add, you know, to keep the students there. So add every year, it's to add another one, add another one, and so that quickly becomes an issue. Um, obviously, Hewitt has fewer students, and so, yes, we could move them into Buryo and Hawthorne or something, but then we have the same issue that I'm said with Lincoln is you're gonna move them, split them into two different schools, Raven One School, and then maybe even have a whole thing change after we do the whole the whole plan for all the elementary schools. That doesn't seem great.
Yeah, um, just one clarification, the the Red Granite plan is two classrooms the next year, and I believe four or six the following year cuz they expand their their grade levels directly to four K to eight, correct?
We would add up to sixth grade the second year and then let that sixth grade class continue on.
Thank you.
Well, then, is there another option within our district, another elementary facility that has some capacity that that sort of strategy can be deployed in a different facility? John Marshall, I think John Marshall has capacity, right? I don't know about others, but, you know, is there somewhere where if we set them there for the next couple of years until this gets sorted out, you know, that they'd be able to stay in one location?
Right. Her, you know, John Marshall would be a, would have some capacity, wouldn't have the same uh, environment, right? Uh, so I don't know how how much they could practice their 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 philosophy without the right environment. I I wonder if, earlier Lance, you mentioned a workshop. Would would the board be interested in a workshop with the Montessori Governance Board and the Red Granite Board together? We could bring those, the the work from the previous subcommittee, review that work, discuss and develop solutions together.
I definitely wanna be involving both of them in the conversation. I I guess I just wanna acknowledge the frustration that they, I'm sure, are both feeling um, in the midst of this, and I I'm feeling very conflicted that, you know, contracts and promises were made based on a solution that really wasn't possible. And that that's hard for me now, because when we got further down the road, it was clear that couldn't be done with excellence without referendum money. And so when you took that piece from the secondary merger out, it just was this trickle down situation. And so I just don't necessarily have a solution uh, right now, but I do think it's important to acknowledge how frustrating that is. I'm sure for them, it certainly is for me as a board member to be in this position. And I think they absolutely need to be a part of the conversation if we're having a workshop because it's on the table, like all of it is just, this is really a difficult situation, so.
Yeah, I agree. And I and I think it's a, it's a good way for us to discuss with with them, while they'll see the meeting, obviously, but that we, we can't give them an answer right now. That's like to Montessori, we can't say, yes, you could have a building by this year. You know, if, cuz we know that their preferred location is in an elementary building on the bus line. They've told us that. But is that, is that such a strong preference that you'd wait five years and maybe it never happens? Or would you rather just say, well, we're, we wanna grow now, and so we wanna, we wanna stay in, and man, I I think they need to be involved in that decision and tell us, we make the final decision, but tell us what what you prefer.
Right, and we don't need a workshop for that. I mean, to get a workshop together, we're gonna be telling both groups, we don't know much right now because this is part of a bigger picture. But that conversation could happen mano a mano with with Montessori. Red Granite is taken care of for for next year when they plan to open. As the rest of this continues to evolve, we know what those requirements are, and they're considered in the big picture.
Now, I'd like to know Montessori's opinion on that sooner rather than later, because cuz if their opinion is we don't wanna wait around for years and then maybe not get that elementary school anyway, we'd rather just move forward with what we originally planned at Horace Mann, then we have to get that back on the table for our referendum spending and our construction planning and bidding and and everything else.
Right, but that's a conversation. I think that administration can sit down with the folks from Montessori tomorrow for an hour, and they can tell them, or half an hour, and say, here's what we want, blah, 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 here's the reasons. Administration brings that back to the board at our next meeting and says, we talked to them, here's what they want. Okay, thank you. We'll consider that in the next, you know, as as this thing evolves.
And they're having a meeting tomorrow. I don't know if they.
Happy accident.
But yeah, they can, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think that they have to be a part of the workshop that we might need, but perhaps if they're part of, you know, the beginning to say, hey, we wanna express to you, this is our preference. This would be the ideal, this would be acceptable, and just sort of share those things. We can ask any questions that we might have that administrative administration may or may not have asked, and then they can exit, and then we can have whatever workshop we need to have in addition to talk about what the elementary piece is. I don't know. I I think it's valuable to, I would like to, I'd like to talk with them, and I mean, maybe you're fine with just, and I don't think there's anything necessarily wrong with that, but.
Well, why don't we just invite them?
Sure.
Invite them if they if they want to come, they can. If they are more comfortable just giving you a statement of, hey, we had our meeting, and this is what we decided, then that's okay too.
We'll do, yep. All right. Uh, by the way, the this agenda was built based on on motions and and suggestions from the last meeting, so if um, we're just trying to make sure we we understand direction. So there was a comment about moving four K into individual schools. Is that an interest of the board? And you know, stop right there. Or do you, or do, or do we leave them?
But is it, is it, I mean, it creates a situation where s- some students don't have to move one more time. They would get used to the older kids being around, you know, there could be benefits that way. Um, we would have a space issue at every building, obviously.
And we could have a staffing and numbers issues too, depending, cuz some schools might have eight kids and some might have fifty.
And then you have demographic shift and fluctuations in four K population every, any given year, so that's why this was consolidated back in the day, which was controversial back then, right? But it was bringing resources together so that we can best serve those four K students in fewer facilities.
Just, uh, I I'm sure the board saw this, but uh, for the audience too, we just put, this is the current number of four K and early jo- early childhood students by school. You can kind of see the way it's.
What about having four K at some elementary schools? And I I mean, I think of myself as as a parent of an elementary child and a child that would be going on a four K, having to drop two kids off at two different schools, fifteen to twenty minutes, when you have to go to, you have to drive to work, it doesn't sound like much, but that time adds to your travel when you have to drop two kids off and pick two kids up. And that's just what, why I'm thinking having some elementary schools with the four K instead of just having one four K.
Well, right now, we've got, that's, so that's our current, we have four now. But we could expand it or we could.
Or, yeah, ma- ta- make it two. I I mean, I I know some parents would still have to drop off at two different schools. And 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 get parents to have to do that now with the elementary and.
If you went down to eight buildings, you you would be consolidating services, right? And you'd have a bunch more kids depending upon which buildings got put together. But again, is that, is that the ultimate goal?
Well, I think our, from when we first started the consolidation conversation, our goal is to have equity across the schools because we we don't have that right now. And the improvements in the being able to provide staff with a better quality of life, not having to go to two, three different schools in one day. So that that's what I I, my understanding was that we were trying to do with the consolidation of our schools, although cons- consolidation of the schools wasn't the ultimate plan, but I think that would have to happen in order to reach our goals, which was to have equity and better services for staff and our our students and family.
Yeah, I I guess I'd go with Cory, maybe, you know, but what is the best practice? I I don't know. I mean, I heard, we heard that when these things were consolidated all those years ago, that it was a a best practice and, you know, better for the students because the staff was closer together. Okay, so what what are the results of that? How is that measured? How has that really benefited the students and the staff? Because I've heard from staff too, saying, yeah, that's great. I've got other, you know, teachers I can talk to, but those students also, we lose that continuity of me, the pre-K teacher, your four K teacher, being able to talk to the kindergarten teacher for that next year during, you know, transition. So there's disadvantages too. I don't know what what the right answer is. I don't know that any of us do.
Yeah, and on the previous slide, I do add, if if the board's interested, um, we could do a presentation about best practices for early learning if the board's interested.
I I'm interested, and I don't mean this to sound sarcastic, but because I've been on the board for so long, I get different presentations about best practice and they change. And I know that's because times change and people change, um, but sometimes it goes back to what we were told before wasn't the best practice, and so sometimes I think you can almost find a study to support anything. Um, so I would be interested in it, but I'm just I'm just a little hesitant to to think whatever that presentation is means that that's that's gonna be the best practice for the next ten years because we find out five years later that there's, you know, a new study got done, and now they think it isn't. Um, so I think it's a factor for us to consider. I'd be interested in hearing about it, but I would be, you know, I I wouldn't take it as, well, this is definitely what we're going to do.
Yeah, I I I think that it would be a data point, not the data point.
And I think some of those number, numbers could change too. If we, if we had fewer buildings, and if we were able to put four K in more buildings because we combined them together, I think some of those four K numbers could go up. Um, I I just, it just seems logical to me that more people would put their students in four K if it was at a building that was going to also be their kindergarten building, and if it was at a building that was, you know, a mile from their house or a block from their house. It 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 might, might help us improve some of those numbers.
Yeah, um, I think one thing, just to be mindful of these numbers, it does not pull out, like, for example, the hundred and twelve students that we have served or or are attending four K on our community sites, which if you're looking at, for example, the Stetin numbers of forty two, only twenty two of our current students of that forty two would be attending Stetin. If that was an elementary school, about forty three percent of Stetin's population attends our community sites. So there's programming, kind of logistics within there that the data that you're looking at doesn't always highlight and factor in, so.
And and a lot of, a lot of the times, those community sites are because of the wraparound childcare that goes with it.
So you're saying of the, the, in the example that you gave about Stetin, of those forty two students, they're not necessarily in WASA four K, they're in some community four K sites. Well, right, you're right. I know, I'm sorry, I I didn't say that right. So they're not necessarily in school buildings, they might be in the community.
Correct.
It needs another, it needs another column.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, and I think if you demographically broke down each of those of where students are attending in our four, four K early learning academies, you you'd find that very few are attending within, because of their childcare is where they're attending, so very few are attending in what the boundary as their four K site, because they, it's dependent on where their childcare is.
Right, or it's dependent on where, like, if you're gonna have to drive your student to a four K, I mean, I'm a Stetin parent. Stetin didn't have a four K location. If I was gonna drive my student to four K, which I did, I could choose anywhere, and so then I chose elsewhere, right? And so so yet, had it been at Stetin, that's absolutely where we would have chosen. So, I mean, I think it's not just childcare, it's certainly also convenience of location if you're driving anyway, but thank you for that that clarification. That's helpful to know that.
And one other, just one other point to throw out there so you know, our open enrollments for four K come in the most when we're able to offer wraparound childcare.
It it sounds like this might be something that we wrap into the elementary study. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, next one. Um, so again, we talked about parity at our schools. Just, I don't know if there's any right now, what we're going to continue to do is develop that that six twelve curriculum. But we talked about parity, and so we just wanted to, if we're able to, give us some clarification. Does that just mean they offer the same classes, those classes are actually be able to be run? We would propose that the same courses would be, would would meet the same academic standards and use the common assessments. We're able to really say that across the river, the kids get the same experience. So English nine would have, you know, common assessments and common standards, all those kind of core classes. So just looking for any, a- a- any thoughts on what what this means. Like I said, we'll continue to develop the curriculum. What does parity mean and what do we wanna do about it?
Just to clarify what I had said from two weeks ago, and I tried to qualify it all across the slides, was that was ju- just a number that I had pulled out of the air. I, that was not a board agreed upon number, there was nothing approved. It it was only for illustrative purposes only, so.
So the percentage isn't necessarily, but but I think the question about parity is still a good one because, and I think it's good for people to hear this. We can often offer the same course at both high schools, and so you you could say, oh, both schools provide the same opportunity, but if in the end, it's only held at one of the schools because of student numbers, did we really give both sets of students the same opportunity? So I, there's a big difference between offering it and actually holding it. That said, um, I would never support, this actually came up during a community meeting. One of the questions was, why don't you just, if you want the schools to be equal, just have the same courses at both schools? And Dr. Hill's pointing out, we would have to take away opportunities to do that. So we could make both schools equal by taking away all the opportunities that we either don't have two staff to run or there aren't enough students to run it. So we only offer what both schools, so that would actually room, take away, and I would never support, like, the whole, the whole concept of the restructure was to um, create equal opportunities and then actually expand on that. Um, so I would never support going backwards and taking away opportunities if one side can't support it and another side can. So I I think we have to try to find ways to make it easier for students on whatever side doesn't have that class to still take that class.
And that's what I brought up.
And that's what I brought up a few weeks ago. We're in a different age and heck, back in ninety three, I said, I could see the students at N T C over in Antigo. Campus, cuz they had, we had teleclasses. Could see them on camera, you had microphones, you talked to each other with one instructor here in Wassa. So don't tell me we can't do it now cuz we're doing it in ninety three.
Sure, and we do that now too.
So that that's definitely, that has to be one solution.
Is that the same opportunity though? So if 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 my if my child wants to take this class.
He can't do it with automotive.
He has to take, and he has to take it remotely. Well, a child at a different school, just because of where they live, gets to be in person with the teacher. Is that is that equal opportunity or do we pay the teacher to travel back and forth and hire extra staff? And now now neither child gets the teacher every day in person. They get half their time remotely. Have we have we improved things?
Well, I I think you're you're jumping to conclude, right, and and assumptions that we don't know. I think that to offer the same courses at both schools. If that's the goal, that's. A goal, but you you already said you don't wanna offer and Karen, you made this point at the last meeting. You don't think that offering one hundred percent. Of the same classes is required or healthy for the district. I agree. So what what does that? Mean going forward?
I think something that you mentioned, Dr. Hilt, you said, well, you know, these two different classes. They teach the same standards, they meet the same requirements. Is the scheduling differences, is that's what, is that what's driving two different classes? Because otherwise, wouldn't we as a district come together and say, no, this is the best curriculum to use? Or is is it because of the scheduling differences and the way the buildings are set up that we end up with two different classes meeting the same? Standards, why wouldn't, you know, wouldn't there be one that's better than the other or come, take the best out of both and make it into one?
You know, I I think over the years, um, when when people have developed curriculum. And 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 I'd look to, you know, Deb, if you've got something to offer here too, but um, you know. We could offer in in a nine twelve setting, the same standards across different classes. And I think that's what's happened. I think they've said, you know, so we're developing ninth grade English at at East. You know, here are the standards that we're going to, because they they aren't absolute. There is, there is some professional discretion in what what standards are. Are taught because there's way more standards that to teach than than you can cover in a in a year. So typically, a lot of times we merge them together, we create power standards. Um, we somehow emphasize certain standards and they may not be the same across the two schools. Um, but we think that one of the main goals is this equal opportunity for students. So we would like to shift that practice to what you just said. If we've got the same classes, they should be the same classes. And they should be assessed the same way and be addressing the same standards. So I don't know, would you add anything to that, Deb?
As well, some of the difference between offering I B programming at East and A P programming. At West has led in some of those core areas to different preparation in courses that are part of the sequence. To those higher level classes. Equally, when teachers meet in P L C, they're able to take a look at what they have just taught. Evaluate how successful it is and then to be able to incorporate the practices of their colleagues. That is part of how we end up with something, you know, English nine, for example, looking one way at Wassa East in a different way. At Wassa West. If we're able to bring all of the E nine teachers together in a P L C. Where they can collaborate together and establish their sequencing and their units. And their methods of instruction, you know, that helps us to solidify those classes a little more. But finding time for teachers on, you know, in two different schools to come together in P L C is going to be challenging. We do have the opportunity with our independent learning days and with our professional development days. That this year and next year, um, in the proposed calendar, it looks like at the very least. Our teachers would have the opportunity for that collaboration at least once a month. I think that helps us. Um, but if we can, if what the board would like is to identify power standards. For those common classes so that we know in science nine, th- these are the standards that are being taught. Um, and in this sequence in preparation for science ten. But that's the work that we're asking. Is is that the direction that the board would like us to go?
I think it's two separate issues because we've talked about. The two courses, why are they different if they're teaching this, like, why can't we just pick whatever the best practice is and go with it? That's one issue. And then a separate issue is when there's just literally different, like just different courses. They just. They might be the same subject, but they're just not even the same course. So it's two different topics.
And and in terms of the the course is not even offered, the the second part to your point, Lance. To me, I guess it's it's as straightforward as just doing a gap analysis on what is offered at one and not the other. And which ones of those that are different do we want to solve for? And if it's five out of ten, great. If it's ten out of twenty, wonderful, what whatever that is. Whatever the priorities are for the students and and the families, why are they going, you know, from one side to the other? What are they? I I don't know.
But not and not just offered though, actually.
Absolutely.
Cuz you might offer French three at both schools, but if there's.
I think we should get out of that, the business of describing a class as being offered. I mean, to me, if if it's listed, it's gonna be taught.
Well, what do you do if it's listed and? In fifty, you know, or thirty students sign up for one and four sign up for another. Are we gonna hire?
I don't know.
More teachers to teach the classes of four?
Depends what the priorities are.
And I think there's there's some other consequences to when we do that. What ends up happening, and I think we've seen, is that. Then we maybe make a minimum number of students in order to run this course at the. The campus that can't necessarily fully support it. And then there becomes rigidity with regard to you may not drop this class because we based. A teacher, you know, position on having this course. And then kids are in classes that they maybe wanna have changed their mind about, wanna drop. And that adds to a lot of inflexibility and a totally different student experience as well that I think sometimes. We've heard from and that, you know, is not what students and families want either. So I think we just need to be really cautious uh, to make blanket statements about that. But I completely agree with the the goal of trying, I like Lance, how you're pointing out that. If they're similar, it does seem like, why can't we just choose which is better? But I think it's depends who you ask, right? The people who are doing it at their building think theirs is the best way. And the people at the other building are like, well, we do it this way because this is the best way. And so then it requires someone to say, well. I've decided this is the best way and all of you are mad, you know, and so. Then we need to decide as a board if that's what we're asking for.
I I will go to the limit and make a blanket statement that say, that says, and I think Dr. Hilt was alluding to it, over the years. West and East have been allowed to operate completely independently from one another and there's been zero expectations of, like, zero is too strong of a word. There's been less than ten percent expectation that you guys will operate more homogeneously than you do today. And that goes back to when I first got on the board with Kathleen Williams and she would readily admit that off the record. They kind of been doing their own thing. Nobody said, hey, you guys need to come together. When we had those courses offered, um, those new math courses, right? And prerequisite of that should have been, okay, if you're gonna offer it at West, how do you do it over here? So there's a philosophical change that needs to happen as well and a cultural change. And some people are just gonna have to get over whatever their, you know, preconceived idea is. And get on with the show because it's not about what they were brought up with anymore on either side. They're gonna have to work together.
But I even, I agreed with everything you were saying until you got to that one point about the prerequisite because. What you maybe you didn't mean this, but what I got from that is if we have one teacher at West that is certified. And is able to teach this class, we can't offer it because there isn't one at East. So so now we're taking away opportunities for kids.
But what other solutions did you look for?
What you just said that it was a prerequisite is it has to be offered at East as well.
Right. So in order to offer that at East, what other solutions did you look for? You said there's one certified teacher at West. Did they look for another certified teacher? Did we offer to send somebody to training? Did we offer to do telepresence rooms with the course? Did did we offer to pay for the teacher to to go buy a friggin Prius and let him drive back and forth across the city? There's all kinds of solutions. I don't know how many of them are viable, but we don't even look at them.
Well, we do. Be careful. You're making blanket statements.
Yeah, I am making blanket statements because when they came and presented it and we asked, what work went on to offer this at East? Nothing.
I I would say that's not accurate, but that's a conversation we're gonna have.
So what what, so what activity happened to offer it at East? What solutions were thrown out there?
Well, they talked about the fact that they already have different classes that are teaching the same type of thing. It's in a different way. And that goes back to the whole, you know, difference between East and West. Um, but rather than just using that one example, I just think in general, I I would be resistant to. Something that says it has to be viable at both schools in order to be offered because I, that's taking. That's taking opportunities away from students. And we keep saying West, but let's use East as an example. You can't offer your automotive program. Because West doesn't have the, West doesn't have those amazing auto base. Like, I would never support that. I gotta take opportunities away from East. And so that's.
Right, so so come to an understanding on how you're going to make those courses accessible to all students.
Well, I think we all, again, though, as soon as that becomes the prerequisite. We might really shut down teachers from being like. Exploring that next level of certification or creativity of bringing a new course. If it means they're gonna get pressure from their peers to say, oh, great, now we need to figure that out at our school. Or if I introduce this, it might mean that now I'm gonna have to travel back and forth between two schools. That doesn't sound very appealing. I'm gonna stay stay away from doing that. So I think, you know, there's just. There's some tricky fallout to a blanket prerequisite, I think, that we wanna be. Really careful about. Because it will hinder our staff and our students from pulling back opportunities from both both buildings. Because that we can't offer it at both. And certainly our staff from really exploring their passion. That might not be the passion of someone in the other, the building. And I don't wanna do that. I think that's how you really burn people out and make people wanna leave. Because they don't feel like they have the freedom to really excel in the areas that.
What if we just ask the question at East? Hey, is there anybody that wants to get certified in this so we can offer it over here? Thoughts?
So the two courses, data science and computer science, I was pretty adamant that we will. I will move forward with this gladly because we were consolidating so it would have been accessible to every student. Because those are going to be junior senior classes. Um, so I can just say that about those two courses. And in talking with some of the staff at Wassa East, there wasn't at the time that those courses were put forward. An interest, we can certainly go back and ask if any of the staff there would be interested. But the reason those two courses came forward when they did was that we were under, we were operating under. The idea that we were consolidating and that those two courses were gonna be available to every student in the Wassa school district.
Well, no, I don't think we should get too hung up on that one example. I think in general, we've talked about, there are many reasons why some classes. Aren't available at both schools. And I I agree with everything you're saying, Pat, about trying to limit that as much as possible. I'd just stop when we get to the point, if it gets to the point where we say we can only do it if it's available at both schools, like it. There's just, if we have two different high schools, there's just gonna be some things that are available at one. Other, I I'd like to limit that as much as possible, but some of that's going to exist.
And we acknowledge that when they built the automotive stuff at East. We we knew that going in, that it wasn't going to be at West and there was no plans to do it at West. Some of those things are just going to be.
This is a very healthy discussion, helps us understand the issues. How about if we go to the next slide? Cuz here is one idea that's been tossed around. Um, if we're keeping our two separate high schools. And we wanna increase op, you know, e- equality of opportunity. Is the board interested in removing inter in district transfer? Criteria. So if I I I live in the east zone or the west zone, whatever, I can go to either high school. Um, we'd have to set a a timeline, right, so we can do the this, you know, the the course enrollments and do staffing.
I personally would say no. I think it should be open to, I I mean. I I, cuz I've heard of instances where we denied someone moving from one side or the other and then they went to D C Everest. You know, because they weren't allowed for whatever reason. No, I'm sure that's not many cases, but it is a case that I've, that I was made aware of. So I think students and families should be allowed to take their children to wherever they go for, I mean. Maybe it's a bullying situation, right, and they're trying to get away from that high school or, you know, that that could be a situation, right? So I I would hate to restrict. I I I can see both sides of the argument.
So I'm trying to remove restrictions.
You said.
Yeah, sorry, I.
I'm sorry, would the board be interested in considering the removal of all restrictions for in district transfers?
That's I am for, sorry, I'm for removing all restrictions.
Okay, sorry about that.
Dr. Hilt, you sent us some numbers that I don't think were included in this presentation. Later, right? So, um, I think they're valuable numbers to share with the community. Because I think that that the community would be surprised by them. I'm a little surprised by them. Um, with regard to how many West neighborhood students are transferring into East. And vice versa. One question I have for you is if you could get us information about, and I know Pat asked this as well. If there are specific reasons that are given in particular to academics, that would be helpful. I'm assuming, and maybe you can answer this, does it have to be an academic reason?
No, it can be, um, you know, you talked about bullying situations. That's another reason we allow. Um, but typically, it's one of those two. Um, Kayla, am I missing anything?
So if I I lived on the east side and I moved to Rip Mountain, say, I wanna continue my career at Wassa East, we'd allow that to happen as well.
What what do we do with transportation in that situation though? Because I I support, I support open internal, I I mean, i- if I live on the west side and I wanna choice in the east. I I can choice in a marathon at East, why can't I choice in, I should be able to do that. I agree with that completely. But one thing I think we should do different in our district that you don't get when you go into a different district is we should, we should supply. Transportation if we don't. I mean, i- if it's a, if it's just a bus that's at the one building to take. Because otherwise, you run into a situation where the only ones that can do this are the ones that can afford to transport themselves. And I know, that's not fair. So it should be open to students that can't afford to transport themselves as well, or or just, it shouldn't say afford, just. They, you know, their parents don't have the ability to do it for any reason.
Yeah, that that's accurate. I mean, when families request to go to a different school, they're responsible for transportation. There's some scenarios like there is a transfer bus from Wassa West to the east side for E E A. And so they could take that bus back and forth, but there's, it's, it doesn't work in reciprocation.
So that's, so my answer to the question is I would support this, but I, even though it would be a cost, I think that we should have a a shuttle or a bus. Or something that that does the transfer. So that transportation isn't the reason why families can't choose this.
The other consideration, and I I know it's not up there, but one of the, from a high school is different than middle school or the elementaries. The elementaries becomes very problematic when students are allowed to move to another because it fills up the sections. And then families that may move into that elementary school, there is no space for them. So then they end up being district placed to another school. So so it's not up there, but just for thoughts.
Yeah, I guess my comments in terms of acceptance of this or whatever, we're limited to secondary, you know, or to high school, not. Yeah, I guess my comments in terms of acceptance of this or whatever, we're limited to secondary, you know, or to high school, not, not to elementary.
The other consideration would be to have a, a set date for that. Just because in terms of staffing for the, the next school year, if we have an influx of students to one bill, that could really change their staffing practices or what classes are offered for the following year.
Are there any other drawbacks that we wouldn't know of to doing this? Cause clearly this isn't what is being allowed right now. And there's, I'm assuming a reason for it. I would imagine there are other districts who do this. And so I'm just wondering, what are some of the other drawbacks?
And you see some of the, oh, go ahead.
One of the things is if a student, so right now WIA comes into play, right? So if I transfer from one school to the other after a certain date, now I'm ineligible. And one of the reasons that that would be in place is so that people aren't school shopping. I really like football at this school, I wanna play basketball at this school and doing all of those things. So you could get into a situation where a student may not, they may be at the other school and not allowed to go back in the other direction.
And you'll see some of the other questions we've got here. Are there any legal restrictions for this? What about staffing, transportation? So we wanted to test, see, check the board's interest first. We can certainly talk to other districts, see if they allow this, experiences have been. But those are some of the same questions we've got.
Another piece of that data point that might be interesting would be, how many are denied? I saw the numbers on how many are going from one side to the other, but are we, are we denying more than that? Or, you know, is it just a handful that are denied or? Cause that might answer your question, if you open this up, is it gonna open up the floodgates? I don't, I wouldn't suspect that it would.
Yeah, it would be a question of how many families aren't filling out the paperwork to do it because they don't have a reason, right? So we, we usually do, if there's coursework that's offered in one school, if you're moving from one school to the other area, or if there's extending circumstances, so that's where the bullying, anxiety, stress, those things come into play sometimes.
I think it's important too, Karen, you said the community would be surprised. I was a little surprised to see that there are on average more kids going from West to East than East to West.
Yeah. Yeah, that's been a common, like, thing the community thinks that West is high because so many kids are transferring in there, it's just not reality. I, the restrictions that we have, I, I think that families that want to right now, if they can afford or can make the transportation work, they find a reason. And act, it might, the, the academic reason they give you might not be the reason, but they find the reason if they want to. And so I, I think what this would do is it would open it up to maybe the families that aren't aware that they can do that. And also if we provide transportation, it could open it up to the families that couldn't afford to do it, transportation on their own.
I, I wonder a little bit if the numbers are based on population, just growth and sprawl of the community? Because a, a large section of that is, I've moved to another location and now I wanna go to my home school. I started there in ninth grade. I wanna go tenth grade, eleventh grade. So I wonder if there's some growth that's causing the numbers as well.
I agree with you, Lance, that if we head down this path, I think it would have to include a shuttle at the, like, you still have to get to your home school. Because I think with our busing issues, we can't be
Right.
busing kids from their houses to the school across town. And I would think the community wouldn't expect that after the uproar of, you know, extra driving. So, but I would think if, if people wanted that opportunity, we need to be able to make that accessible for all students in the district. And, and there will be a, a portion of students that are unable to because of their own family demographics, that I just think it has to be made equitable that way.
All right, we'll continue to work on that then, if it's interest. Good. Thanks, Karen. Oh, Mr. Foster.
I just wanted to speak to the WIA part really quick. We would, we would just wanna make sure that we are absolutely crystal clear to our families at secondary level, what exactly the guidelines are. I had a meeting at the WIA last week and I confirmed and double checked with one of the associate directors when we were down there, that there is no exceptions because you live in the same community or because it's one district. The eligibility rules are, are very cut and dry and that they wouldn't change because of this. So I think historically, the people who have transferred based on athletics really attempt to do it either in middle school or at the beginning of the freshman year. So I think if you open it up, it might be a little more appealing to do it for that reason for other folks. So it would just be really important for them to know what the cutoffs and what they are and what exactly it means. So it's not just the day you start school. If you, football starts August first. If you go to Wassa East and you practice football for one day before your sophomore year, even if you never step foot and then you start, you say, ah, forget this, I hate this coach, I'm gonna go to West. And you enroll to West to go there starting day one of your sophomore school year. Well, if you practiced one day at Wassa East, you are now ineligible to play, compete at the varsity level for three hundred and sixty-five days in all sports. So I just think it's still ungood either way. We just have to make sure that we're crystal clear with parents about what the ramifications are.
And, and that's the same, that isn't any worse than district, than choicing into a different district. It's the same as if they choose to go to any school.
And you ask about other areas, Karen. I think a very big deal's made about that in our community, like kids go to Moses and, oh my God, I can't believe they're doing that, vice versa. You go to the Fox Valley and that is just common practice. I mean, that's, if you look at the other programs and some of the schools and you look at where those states home attendance area is, I'm not saying that would happen here, I'm just saying it's pretty common practice.
All right, thank you. So continuing along the idea of trying to create two equal high schools and middle schools, frankly, these, these enrollment projections, these are for the high schools. You saw those at the last meeting, you see the trend. Excuse me, where West is projected to grow, East is projected to decline. I, I should note at this point, Mr. Vee-Goot has been doing these enrollment projections in a variety of ways and basically kinda tick, picking the one in the middle, right? This is not our area of expertise, but he's kinda using, you know, some mathematical projections and, and other processes. So, so that, this is our, our best guess at the time. Is that fair enough? All right, all right, thanks. So you see that, that this is the same trend you saw at the last meeting. If you go to the next slide, Cassie, this is the historical enrollment in our middle schools. In that, in that communication we put out to the staff and the community last week after the board meeting, we just want people to know, okay, here's what we know. Here are some questions, what questions do you have? This is one of the biggest areas of interest was, are we gonna try and do anything to balance enrollments? So that's why I included that in here. So again, you can see John, John Mear is really hard to project mathematically because as you can see, it was growing. And now this, these are again historic, so this year it's at nine seventy-three, so it's got a slight decline. So mathematical projections wanna project a, a continued growth. So we're, we're calculating that in, in different ways. But these are actual enrollments for the last few years and then the difference. If you go forward one more, Cassie, this is the projected enrollments, our best calculated guess for these two schools. And you can see John Mear kinda maintains Horace Mann declines and that gap continues. So let's see, is that, I, so I guess the question is, is there any interest? Oh, if you can go to the next slide, Cassie. Is there any interest in trying to balance enrollment or we just leave the high school boundaries as, and middle school boundaries as they are for now?
I would say, given everything else going on, you leave them as they are. We've got other issues going on to try to help with the, not issues, initiatives, to try to help with the availability and access to coursework. To, to start throwing another, a boundary move to balance something that we don't know what we're trying to accomplish yet, other than equal the numbers. I, I don't see the point in tackling that right now.
Other board members?
I guess I think you should wait for right now too, so we look at the few other things first.
I think you should wait for right now and then keep waiting after that too.
Yeah, you, you thought consolidation was an emotional issue. Telling people that live blocks away from John Mear at West.
That's the problem is whenever you try to draw the line, it's like.
That was a nice way of seeing what you said.
Yeah, because otherwise, we've talked about, well, what if we moved an elementary school? Which one would Jefferson and Grant, because they're right next to Grid Street, but they can see West? You know, so do you move the line? Now you got demographic issues when you're, when you're moving the southern part of that line. And then the line has to keep moving maybe. So, yeah, push that off till when I'm not on the board anymore.
Say we're not gonna balance, all right, thank you. And the last one, more of an awareness, but just make sure it's not an issue. The current contract for First Student expires June thirty, twenty twenty-five. We would like to go to bid. That would be, that would happen this winter. We develop the RFP for the spring, we get the bids, the board would approve a new contract, whether it's with First Student or somebody else, this coming summer of twenty twenty-four because that new company, that company needs a year, if they're new, needs a year to get everything ramped up. So that's kind of an informational piece, but is there any concern with us starting to go to develop, to go to that bid process? Okay, I didn't think there would be, just wanted to make sure you knew what we were doing. So I think that's the last slide, right? All right, thank you for the clarification, appreciate it.
Okay, that moves us then to our end of referendum planning. Josh Vee-Goot, Assistant Superintendent of Operations, will share a presentation on the potential project list from the, for end of referendum planning.
Good evening. We just wanted to run through an updated budget based on some of the course changes we've had in the last couple of weeks and then revisit some asks on projects at the high school. So just wanted to get your opinions on those things. This is the exact same budget summary that we look at every couple of weeks. And this is the one we looked at at the most recent board meeting where we went over this. Just looking through everything that's been done so far and where do we sit in terms of over, under budget? So you can see on the bottom right there, we have that about two million five hundred thousand dollar number. And that's under budget. So that's where we currently sit right now. And we're, you're just going to have to bear with me, we're going to run through pretty much the same slide four times, so. Just in terms of what would it look like if we wanted to move back to some of the original scope? And I know we've had a lot of conversations tonight that will influence all of this. This is more for information, where do we sit right now for the budget? So I tried to highlight in yellow the changes that were made. What would it look like to move that money back into Grant? We had that, I'll go back to the first slide. So we had that two million sixty-eight thousand dollars earmarked for Grant in the original referendum. And then through the course of what was done, that was moved out of the, of the referendum budget. So what would it look like to move that back in? And all these changes kind of follow that same flow of what would it look like to move things back to the original scope? So what would that look like? What would the Hawthorne Hills road improvements look like? And the most recent estimate for that is not one point nine million, but closer to three million forty-five thousand. So is that change, there's the Horace Mann change, what was talked about tonight? What would it look like to build out that space for Montessori to have that? So moving that five million dollars back there and taking it out of Lincoln, where, where it had been sitting when we looked at this previously. And then just moving the Lincoln number back from three point two million to two hundred and fourteen thousand. Any questions on those four changes? Okay, where that would get us then, if you look back down to the bottom right, is about two million dollars over available resources. So we have the initial referendum, hundred and twenty million-ish. And then the projected interest earnings of five point five million. So this would take us about two million dollars over that. Again, this is just more for your information. Those additional high school projects that we talked about, the mass notification and fire alarm systems at East, those are currently being designed in to the project, but the board has not taken any official action on them. They were not in the initial scope. The Bleacher Gym storage adjacent to the field house and the, the community room at West for the one point two million that was in the initial scope, but it was bid as an alternate. So that's why it's being presented to you today. The parking lot expansion, ceiling tile replacement, thirty-year roof, band sound system and large group room displays at West. So about three point six million dollars in projects total. What would it look like then if we included all of those projects in the budget? So everything on here is the exact same. And then on the bottom, we have the East High additional projects and the West High additional projects. So the one point three at East, about two point three at West. And what would that do to the budget if we moved everything back and went along with this? We'd get about five point six million dollars over available resources. And I should say, let me go back to this. These numbers, especially for West, were, that was the number when it was bid in August. So it's, it's possible that some of these numbers have shifted a little bit. The subcontractor, I don't think, is required to hold that bid price. So Nexus is checking for us, but we don't have those numbers back yet. Just wanted you to know that. And then this was what we talked about putting in front of you in terms of recommending to do. I think the conversations we've had tonight shift some of that. The two things at East, the mass notification system and the fire alarm system, those would be the ones that would require board action sooner rather than later. And if you want to wait, I understand that. But because those are currently being designed, that would require your action. I did not put a recommend next to the community room and gym storage. I know it was in the initial scope and you expected to see it on the bid, but since it was not in there and the kind of course has changed in terms of what we're doing with the high schools, I did not put a recommend there or not, totally up to you. We would not recommend the parking lot expansion. And then all those other things at West, we would recommend. Those are smaller ticket items that would really either help in terms of the student experience, the longevity of the building or the aesthetic of the building.
Could I interrupt?
Yes.
Just a, a couple of notes about the community room and then gym storage. We've talked again to Mr. Steckbauer and Mr. Zuliger, who's the head custodian. They are still very much in favor of, of adding those spaces for a, a wide number of reasons. You know, access for the community, safety during track meets, you know, just the, you know, the usable space inside the, the gym, the, the field house. So, so there's still very much interest in, in, in the West staff in, in keeping those additions. That's something we probably would not wanna start in winter because it's addition, you know, it costs more because of additions. It's something they could start in the spring if the board, we'd have to get an, another bid on it. Or, you know, go back to the same contractor and ask what the, what the price would be. That's what we're currently working on, so.
And the hope is that the prices remain the same. But I wanted to be transparent with you. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. So we put this recommendation, recommendation out, but I think the conversations we've had tonight maybe influenced that. So what are the total projects? Again, that three point six million. What do the recommendations look like with the community room? That would be two million eight hundred and sixty-six thousand. And without the community room, about that one point six million number. And then I did want to note, when we look at this last slide, it's also the recommendation to not move forward with the, forward with the road at Hawthorne Hills. That three million dollar number is significantly steeper than the initial estimate. So it brings us here in terms of what would it look like if we did those things? We didn't do the Hawthorne Road, we did all the projects at East and we did everything at West except for the parking lot expansion. We'd move to about one point eight million dollars over available resources.
And just to be clear too, that would include the improvements at Grant? Would include, include the, did the Montessori addition at Horace Mann? And the safety and security updates at Lincoln, in addition to what you mentioned?
Correct. And then it would, I may have mentioned this, but it may, it would also include the committee room at West. Correct, and then it would, I may have mentioned this, but it may, it would also include the community room at West.
I have a question on this slide.
Please.
It mentions zero dollars for the Hawthorne Hills site, but there was more site work involved than just the road, there was a new parking lot, sidewalk repairs. Um, there was something else, so there was some other outside site work, not just the road.
I thought, I thought sidewalks were fixed in fa- that phase one, wasn't it?
Yeah, I'm not sure of that, there was, it was parking lots, sidewalks, and I thought there was a third one. Maybe the road was the third one, but there was more than just the road.
Moving the generator too, I thought.
I will double check all of that for you and get you an answer.
Okay.
Josh, just a couple of questions on the East.
Please.
The fire alarm system, the mass notification system. How did that come into being recommended now? I mean, tho- those are, seem like two pretty big things.
Big things.
Like, why wasn't that a priority during the initial scoping?
In the initial referendum? And I, go ahead.
Well, I'd say, well, when, when the, when these projects were first being created, the, the, the digital systems were not really used much. So now, this, this represents moving from an analog to a digital system. This is work that we did at West and at Maine when their communication systems failed. We, we turned them into this single-wired digital system. So for consistency reasons, we'd like to do it. This improves our ability to communicate with the building down to a very granular level. So for safety and security, we know it's expensive, but we think for that reason we'd recommend it. I don't know, Mr. Uding, if you'd add anything for that?
I would just add to that, that, uh, West, Mann, and Maine, our three secondary schools, had this work done and have those notification systems. East was the latest add to that. It gives central office or central management over all sites with that, and they're not individually operated.
And to answer your question about, um, including it in the initial scope, I, I don't know why it wasn't included, so. Why we're bringing it to you now?
I think because we're, everything was analog at the time.
They were initially all scoped as analog.
Understood, so that's the history.
I mean, it seems like it's, it would be good, um, but I s- I'm worried, and I'm gonna sound like, same thing I've said many times before. With each project that we're going over, we're gonna get to the end, and whoever, whatever ones are left to the end are the ones that are gonna get the short end of the stick. Because even the, the slide you showed with the, that assumes that Maine Elementary is still actually only a hundred and forty one thousand dollars. And it's no way it's gonna be.
Nope.
Because we've been over on all of these.
Adjusting every one of those numbers.
So I, I think, I think we have to estimate how much we think will be over on all of those, um, to really get a, a true feel of it. And I, and I just, I'm just worried that whatever ones we pick to be last are gonna have to cut stuff that was supposed to be in the referendum way down, because we've gone over so much on all these other ones. And just for any of the public that are watching, um, because I've heard comments in the community, oh, you know, this went over, that went over, it's gonna cost us so much more, it, it doesn't cost the taxpayers more. We have a set dollar amount that the taxpayers approve to work with. So it, it will not cost the taxpayers a dollar more if we go over at West. What it costs is the projects that haven't been done yet. So the ones that were supposed to be done and supposed to be included in the referendum, we're gonna have to cut those way back.
All right, two other questions quick, Josh. The community room originally came in at four hundred and fifty thousand, what drove the one point two million?
Oh, I don't wanna misspeak without having the numbers in front of me, but I th- I think, to give you what I think is the answer is, that there was thought to be some expected scope savings, uh, but were not realized. Scope savings in other areas where maybe we changed the design a little bit, that doesn't impact anything about usability or feasibility, but saves a little money one way, and then apply that savings to the community room.
Was the storage also, and i- it changed from what the original scope was too. So when, in the referendum planning, it doesn't look now the same as what the referendum planning. So when the referendum planning happened, the estimate of four hundred thousand dollars was based on just like a community room there. What is planned here is different though, right? Doesn't it?
It's an expanded storage.
Expanded storage.
Yeah, the fourth, the four fifty is what we talked about back in February, and that was gonna be additional square footage. And the square footage that was getting added on to like the new weight room, the back of the fieldhouse, that was a little bit of a trade-off where we took these little slivers off over on the front by the auditorium to, to trade that space for there, and that's why I asked Nexus team at that time, you know, what was it gonna take for this square footage here? And the number was, you know, four fifty they gave to us. But as things were designed, Josh is, I would say, speaking correctly, that, you know, where Dwayne and Sharon and the team thought they'd save something, there was no savings, and there might have been increases, so when we get all the way down, there's nothing to apply to this space. And so now we're, you know, three times as much, nearly, so. It's, it's a necessary space.
Yeah, it just seems unnecessary, that's why it was in the referendum, the road is necessary, the space is necessary, the secure entrance at the school is necessary.
I never agreed with the road.
But the voters did, so that's.
Okay, and the, the other one is, where is the money sitting? I know Larry answered this a few months ago, I didn't understand his reply. For the drainage in the outfield, that was in original scope and budgeted for, that was supposed to be done this year. It was put off till next spring, it's a quarter million, four hundred thousand, somewhere in there. Where does that money sit right now that's gonna pay for that?
And I will get that answer for you.
Okay.
And I'll make sure I get it over to you as soon as possible.
Okay.
And that we're planning on doing outside of this.
My understanding is that will be done outside the referendum, because we could do it for less money internally, but I don't wanna give exact.
Okay.
Numbers without knowing.
I thought it was less money, but it still had to come out of the referendum dollars, because it was in the original scope.
It's gonna come out of, um, the maintenance budget.
Trying to cut back, because we're so over.
So it comes out of the maintenance budget, the, the one million capital annual that we do?
We'd have to confirm the, the location.
I'll double check and look at the location for that expense.
It's from district dollars.
But originally, it was in the referendum design, I went back.
Correct.
Yeah. And we're, you know, in some of these places, some of these spots, even where it's over, we're still pulling stuff back.
Mm-hmm.
From the referendum, just because of costs and inflation and stuff, is we're just not able to do everything that's in there. So we're already cutting, and it, it just, we're gonna have to cut even more.
Yeah, the bids are high.
So my question is, is the recommendation to not move forward with the projects at East? And I only push because we're getting close to that ninety-five percent design review?
Is there any concern with the safety of staff and students when in the building at East because of the new, the current fire alarm system or the current mass notification system?
I would defer to John.
The notification system?
Uh, no, I. Current concerns because of the existing systems, is that what you're asking?
If we leave the existing systems in place, do not spend one point three, three nine million dollars our students and/or staff in any more danger by not doing this?
I cannot speak to the fire alarm system, end of it, I'm just not, you know, that's building and grounds. I would say from a mass notification system, we limit our ability to more effectively and efficiently disperse messages to the building when something would happen. So we can do a better job with mass notification, communicating, locking down, and doing things within the building to address any threats to safety than we can under the current system. So I, I think you as a board would have to decide, does that increase our risk to student and staff safety? Or is that a level piece? We have much more ability with the new systems at Mann, Mir, and West to push messages throughout the building from outside the building. If East doesn't have it, those messages need to be generated within the building.
So it's in the same position as it was a year ago or two years ago, five years ago, it's no worse off, it's just not better off?
No worse off, we don't have the same functionality at East as we would at the other three secondary.
But it's not fail- I mean, we had a couple that were literally failing, and that had, this one's not failing.
Failing, but the analog system was in there for replacement.
Yeah, because we had some that were failing that just weren't working, we had to replace.
Yeah, this, the, in the referendum is included the cost of, of, is it updating or replacing the analog system, John? The current communication system at East?
I would have to look to see, I, I believe it's a replacement.
Yeah, so that's already included, this is the cost to do, to replace the system at a dig- as a digital system.
And there are components of the IP speaker and class system existing in East and have been there. In the large group areas, the noisy areas, the, the sh- uh, the shop classes, so to say.
Well, I, my opinion is what I've said before, um, which is that if through consolidation we have extra funds, I'm okay with spending that on something that wasn't in the original referendum plan. But until we get to that point, which we're not, we're not at, it would, it'd be hard for me to take referendum money away from a different school or project and put it towards this, even though it seems like a, a need, but I could come up with a really long list. I bet if we went to every building, we could come up with a real long list of, of needs at every building. And when we're already over, I, I just, I think we have to find a different way to do it, or we have to wait to see how this whole thing plays out.
I think it has to wait, too.
And that's just my opinion, I've seen nods of heads.
I, I agree with that too, I mean, if we wanna maintain integrity with the original purpose of the funds, then that's, that's a wait and a no right now, because we have to use the funds as they were predetermined to be used before we start adding other things. Because I think we could go to, just like you said, Lance, every school in the district and say, well, as long as we're adding other things to, for them, what would you like to add on to the list? Everyone would have a long thing, you know, so I agree with you, Lance.
Yeah, I, I'd say, I think we need to wait with those two things at East. Looking at West, the bleacher gym storage, obviously it's almost three times as much as what we were, you know, talked about back in February. It completes the design at West, it, it, it creates a, a better situation for tracking the, in, within the fieldhouse. Moves, moves the storage out of the way, gives the community room as was marketed originally. Um, it, it just does a lot of things, and yes, it's over, the whole thing is over by, uh, two point six. It's over anyway from the original number, um, I don't wanna overly justify it, right? Well, sure, but, okay, so this is where I'm going with it. So how about the, the four small things? Can we ask Josh to see, is there some other place in some other fund? And don't use refer- random money, because it wasn't necessarily okayed, you know? Being those four small things, can we take the three hundred thousand from something else instead of taking it out of here?
Yeah, my, my answer for the, for the extra additions to West would be the same for East, is that it wasn't in the original referendum scope, and we don't have money to do it.
Not, not the bleacher and community room.
Yeah, talking about the small things, the thirty year roof, the band system, the large group display. Not at all a comment on whether those are, are, are needed, but just like the ones at East, I don't, I don't see how we can add on when we, to me, looking at this budget, we're gonna have to cut from other buildings that we haven't touched yet.
Well, and that's why I'm suggesting take it from someplace else.
Yeah.
Completely, a completely different funding source as an option, right? But what are you saying about the one point two?
I think that was in the original plan.
And it's just something that adds to the.
It was taken off, but it wasn't supposed to be.
And that's just the way it is, right?
And then that, so that then is the same discussion as the road, that's over, and all of the ones we haven't gotten to yet, that will be over.
I agree. I spent two hours looking at all this stuff, going through and all four charts and, you know, came up with my own chart that, but.
I, could I suggest, the, the bleacher and gym store, we could wait until, I, I don't know if it gets us any more information. Cause I, I see where this, you know, it depends on the, the, um, the work at the elementaries too. But that one we could wait on.
Do we have more projects that are gonna be coming to us soon? So we can see how much over we're gonna be at Maine and at.
So the next one you have coming is, will be the East design. And then the Horace Mann bids.
Closer we get to the end, the better handle we'll have on.
Horse, and I would say that if.
There's this much money left.
Now, it depends on what we do with Grant and Horace Mann with Montessori. But the way it was sitting right now is that most of the bigger projects fairly shortly here will at least have a design and/or build bid budget.
But the West one, that, they wouldn't start it now anyway.
No, but if we, if we would okay it, maybe they would keep the same price.
We have to get the price.
You'd have to get the price.
I, I would like to be farther.
That'd be the reason.
Along this process before committing to another one point whatever million over at West. Like knowing, what does Montessori want, knowing what is the, you know, what are Maine and Rib and Lincoln and Franklin and Jones and all these other ones that we haven't done yet? Like, how much are they actually gonna be?
So we'll have to look at every overage then on everything coming in.
Yeah, I.
And size it up against.
Yeah, I, I've been worried about that the whole time, every time we go over, we're cutting.
I get it, and on that community room, I, I still don't understand how you get off by your estimate on it by three hundred percent. That's a conversation I think that somebody should be having with Nexus, and perhaps asking them to help compensate for that difference, that's a lot. Three hundred percent variance on an estimate is ridiculous.
The one savings we could still address is that district-wide thing, so I, I mean, I, that, that would probably be the, the one way to convince me now, is if, is if there's extra there.
I was gonna ask about that, what is, what are the line items in that eight point six million? Can we get an inventory of that, not now?
Certainly, yeah, and it's.
What is, what is in there, cause I forgot over the days and months.
Keith has told us the percentages.
It's thirty percent.
It's, there's technology, um, there's maintenance, and it would be replacing thirty percent of all furniture that is not in a, a remodel or a new area.
Because the new areas are already getting new.
Okay, yes, so can we get that broken down? Here's the technology, here's the maintenance, here's.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Cause I would have an easier time taking from that than saying, taking from some of these other school projects that we haven't gotten to yet. I guess is what I'm saying.
So, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I, well, again, you know, it doesn't matter which elementary school or which project hasn't been done yet. Even, even if I'm off, I mean, just based upon the overages on the ones that have been bid, I came out with like a thirteen percent average out of the projects that have been bid, that they're over. So even using ten percent, adding on to all, I think that's what I did, even use ten percent, adding on to the projects that haven't been bid, which I think was in your slide, that thirty one million of, right, like a month ago?
Couple of presentations ago.
Right, so it, just ten percent of that, right, you're three million short. If all, if everyone would be re, redesigned and bid, and they're all ten percent over, we're three million short. So maybe, is, that's something that should probably be reassessed as part of our conversation, to get that from those guys, right?
Yeah, just to sort of predict.
Not me guessing.
Where we think those will land, because if it lands in an area that we feel like we still could do it from the district-wide, then, you know, maybe we feel better than looking at five million over.
Josh, could I, could I ask you, in one of, I don't know if this is what you're referring to, Corey. In an earlier presentation, Josh, you had added four percent to every cost that you were including. Was, that wasn't each of these though, that was just the end of referendum options.
So I did, um, I did four percent on the remaining projects that have to be bid yet. Um, but that was also when we were considering, uh, not repurposing these funds with Grant and Hawthorne Road and Montessori and all those things, so it can't be taken in a.
So the third.
And I think, did you do yours off of bid to original budget or bid to design?
I used the original budget numbers, and I came up real close, like thirty million, nine hundred.
So that makes sense, and then the numbers I presented you were bid to design budget, because that's what's brought to you guys when you approve it, so.
Yeah, I'd like. Yeah, I'd like to see it with bid to original. Because that's, that's what the referendum budget is. So if there's a hundred and forty-one thousand budget for Maine, we know that referents don't work out that way. It doesn't work out exactly that way, but that's, that's kind of the guide that I would have. You know, if we're gonna guess it, what Maine would actually cost.
So are you wanting to see updated estimates then for referendum work in the remaining schools?
I guess for me, I would like to see updated estimates on what we would project these would maybe be over based on what's happened so far compared to the original budget. And like Pat, I'd like to know more about what the district wide is because it would be helpful to know what that is and how important it is if we're gonna talk about maybe taking from that to build the the community room and storage at West. Like, is it replacing something that's broken that doesn't, literally doesn't work? Or is it just kind of a nice upgrade? Because this desk is a little bit nicer than the old one, like, you know, to try to prioritize what's more important. We're gonna, we're gonna have to just prioritize some of this stuff.
And that sounds good. That's good direction for me. I can bring that to you.
Any other thoughts from board members?
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Okay, I am seeking a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that will move us right into our special meeting. So I'll call the special meeting to order. First item is an action item. It is to approve the consent agenda, which may include appointments, additional staff, replacement staff, contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, terminations, leaves of absence and retirement. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Any questions on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'm seeking a motion to go into closed session to review administrator contracts pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen point eight five sub one, sub C. I need a first and a second, and then we'll do a roll call after that.
So moved. John Kreischer?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Cody Nicolai?
Yes.
Jennifer Paoli?
Yes.
Joanna Reyes?
Yes.
Corey Sellers?
Yes.
Kieran Vannenberg?
Yes.
Lance Tralow?
Yes. Okay, we will move into closed. Thank you, everyone.